All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order and invite everyone to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, would you call a roll, please?
Jim Rye.
Here.
Jim Rye. Chris Chakal. Michael DeVito.
Here.
Beth Murray Evans.
Here.
Alex Grados.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
The board is present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as presented? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Not second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Roll call.
DeVito.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Grados.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Dombek.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who wishes to address the board on any particular subject? They say no one, we'll move on to the next item. Communications, correspondence, informational items, letters and newsletters. There's some news letters in our packet. Foyer requests, door two, both of which have been answered. Committee reports.
Sure. The Spartan Senate met first Friday of December and just a few things that we went over on the new business portion. Students have been having issues with the Alka water bottle fillers, which are the devices where they put their bottle and it automatically fills it as opposed to the drinking fountain. And they said some of those are starting to rust out and they weren't too thrilled with that in terms of water quality coming out of them. And so the principal advised that he'll have the maintenance director come around to take a look at all of those and make sure they're all up to standards. And then they want to have a survey. The staff want to conduct a survey of the students to see how many students feel that they have a teacher that has a mentor-mentee relationship with the student. To sort of gauge connections in the district as part of their SEL objectives they're working on. And then there's been an increase in tardiness over the last couple of years. Not just arriving to school late, but also making sure that students go from class to class in a timely manner. Sometimes the deans found that students will just leave in the middle of the day and not come back. So they're trying to come up with incentives to ensure students not only come to school, but stay in school throughout the day, such as priority parking or winning AirPods at the end of the semester in a raffle if you have a good attendance record or something like that. They're just piloting some different ideas there. And finally, this is more minor, but students wanted to update their athletic pictures that are throughout the building. Some of them are older and they just wanted to have a more reflective student experience. And it sounded like the principal, "That's an easy fix." Well, but the thing that stood out the most to me was the tardiness issue. I think crap down on that.
The Policy Committee met last Friday and we should have a report for you, I think, for our next meeting. Another first review on policy changes and updates.
There's no planning zoning commission meeting this month.
Any other committee? Superintendent's report.
Two. I am tonight. The first one is the district calendar. This is the second reading. I'm saying kind of into the side here. Just a reminder, we developed the calendar with input from SCA, SES and the district leadership team. Talked about this at the last meeting. The only significant change is that the district will be participating in the Countywide Institute sponsored by the Regional Office of Education. That's earlier in October, so we will be in school in session on Friday, October 25th. We already talked about how to manage that, the music boosters, the craft fair and just managing the traffic flow will take care of that. Tonight I'm presenting the 24-25 calendar without any changes from the last meeting for the board's approval. Any questions for me?
Can you hear any comments? Is there a motion to adopt the calendar as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Need a voice for roll or?
Start. Roll call.
Roll call. All right, roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Grados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The other item I have is amending the Board of Education regular meeting schedule. A little bit of background and then a couple of items towards the end of my presentation that need a little bit of discussion or we could use some direction on. Some things that we've talked about before, if the board votes tonight to move to a monthly meeting schedule as opposed to twice a month, we'd hold meetings on the fourth Tuesday of the month. For the most part, I think we can make that transition pretty smooth. There may be some times where because we've changed that schedule a little bit, something might miss getting on that agenda the fourth Monday of the month that might carry over to the second month. Had a little bit of discussion during, between the last meeting and tonight. Just a reminder, when we make changes like that, a couple bumps in the road give us a little bit of time to work through those, but we're confident that we can do that. The only exception this year before the end of the... This year's meetings for the Board of Education would be March. We'd leave that on March 12th due to spring break. All meetings will take place here in the sixth grade collaboration area. Mr. Cleveland talked about putting this mural up there for the board. If we do that, we'll see how that goes. Also, as a reminder, we would share the agenda in the slide deck when we can advance. That gives the board an opportunity to take a look at that, ask questions if needed in advance of the meeting. There are a few... Oh, one more point there. Getting that slide deck and the agenda out a week ahead of time. Every once in a while, there may be a situation where we have to make, you know, an addition, a small change. Our responsibility would be to bring that to your attention if anything changes from that, that we leave in advance. For the most part, we can predict, but every once in a while, and personnel seems to be the one that comes to mind, get a late resignation, you want to act it on, might pop up. But again, our responsibility would be to bring that to the board's attention. Couple of things that we've talked about as discussion items before. If we want to leave things the way that they are for now and come back and change them later, if we want to try to change them for January. I wouldn't call these recommendations as much as things to consider, but the first one is moving the personnel report and including that in the consent agenda. That would also negate the need for an executive session at every meeting. Doesn't mean we can't have an executive session as needed, but if the personnel report fell under the consent agenda, when it voted earlier on in the meeting, we wouldn't necessarily need that every meeting. Elimination of communications, correspondence, informational items from the agenda. Those things would be included in the board packet. Of course, there's correspondence in between meetings as well. So some of that information can still be shared. It just wouldn't necessarily be an agenda item if the board didn't want it to. Also elimination of open discussion and future agenda items. But again, anything that needed to be on the agenda or discussed at a future board meeting could also be emailed, phone call, conversation. Anything that goes on the agenda should go to Jim or I. Ms. Vence helps me to prepare a draft agenda and we send that to Jim for final approval before it goes out anyway. So still a way to get things on the agenda that need to be on there. But one of the things that can be done to kind of make board meetings efficient could be to remove that. Last one, and this might take a little bit more thinking. Just when we got staff recognition, I think to a point where we had great attendance and great turnout. Staff recognition is currently scheduled for May 14th. That's the second Monday in May as opposed to the fourth Monday in May. And we, last year, we did that on the same night as the board meeting. We did an open house at 6:30 and then the board meeting started at 7:00. That was a big part of the agenda. So we need to think through how to do that. One of the things that we asked the leadership team to do was to kind of hold that date kind of sacred in terms of other events throughout the district. Just to make sure that there was an opportunity for staff to attend the staff recognition at the board meeting as possible. So doesn't mean we still can do that on May 14th and not just hold a... just not hold a board meeting. But we need to think through that busy time of year. I don't think pushing it back necessarily is a good idea. Potentially moving it forward to the end of April instead of May can be an option too. So that's one that doesn't necessarily need to be decided tonight if the board wants to move to one meeting a month. It's something that we'd have to think about and plan for. The last thing I want to bring to the board's attention is we've had some preliminary conversation about what the information that's presented by the building, so elementary, middle school, high school, how that gets to the board during meetings. Some of that may be in advance. Certainly changing the schedule. Convincing to one meeting a month is going to change that a little bit. So we've had some preliminary work on that, not quite done yet, but that's one thing that's still in progress. Again, if the board decides to move to one meeting a month. So I'm going to pause there. Ask for any questions first. And then allow the board to have a little bit of discussion in terms of thoughts on those bullet point items. Any questions for me?
Are we still going to go to that Google sheet where we can have all the questions written out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and I shared this with board. Didn't necessarily share, you know, publicly quite yet, but this is a good time to just make sure everybody's on the same page. In terms of not violating Open Meetings Act, you guys know this, that a Google sheet like that where board members can see that but not necessarily comment is the safest way to avoid an OMA violation. But that is something that we can do for sure. Something I've started. I just haven't had a chance to share it with everybody yet.
What would be the protocol for having executive sessions or what would be... If we, like, let's say something happened with staff or something, then we would just call that at the meeting or we would know that? I mean, is that something that would need to happen very often if we were to remove executive session? I just wonder how the protocol for that would work.
Sure. So my past experience is that's typically something that you know that's coming up. And one of the more common issues is a student. Maybe a student discipline issue has got to be discussed during closed session. We would know that's coming. We would inform the board and then I would work with Jim and get an executive session added to.
Okay.
Could really be anything that falls under closed session. Could be staff, student.
Legal things.
Legal. Anything that we know is coming, we can plan for that and then we can just add the executive session beginning. Some boards of education actually do executive sessions beginning. I've never been a part of a board that does that, but in our history is that, you know, that at the beginning, that's where I would recommend it.
And then I was just wondering on the last bullet point about, is this speaking of the presentations given by different people within the staff?
Yeah, the elementary, middle school.
Like the one we had at the last meeting with, I believe it was, on the school. Yeah.
So I would say that presentation is, those sorts of presentations are going to be critical to have at meetings. I'd really like to have Mr. Rice come a couple of times during the school year. I think sometime towards the beginning, sometime towards the middle, then sometime towards the end is going to be a good idea. And that information, I think, is not only critical to the board to know, but critical for us to share with the community also. So presentations like that would still happen throughout the school year.
Okay, great. And yeah, because I would like to hear from him again. I know that a good point was brought up last time about the curriculum. So I would like to hear more from him on the curriculum.
Yeah.
You know, is the curriculum, or the curriculum being a problem, why some students aren't scoring as high as others? I'm not saying it is, but I would just like to hear more on that particular program we talked about.
Yeah. He's scheduled to come back already in January to follow up and have a little more conversation about, of course, sort of the Spartan. But if you have specific questions like that, not just about anybody in the board, if you have specific questions. You guys know that he's coming back in January, but for speaker that maybe we don't have scheduled, we can add that as a future agenda item. So definitely if they do come back, they can touch on that as well.
And, go ahead. Is it just one more thing? So if we're, future agenda items won't really be discussed if we go with the new schedule or agenda? So would we email you or Jim ahead of time or email you, I'm presuming, ahead of time if we want to have one discussed?
If that's the direction from the board, that's what I would suggest is that we just kind of follow the protocol that's already in place. Let Jim and or I know.
Okay.
And we can get it on the agenda or at least consider getting it on the agenda.
Thank you.
I just thought of when you brought up Mr. Rice, that he recommended, or shared that I thought was a wonderful idea, is that if we get the presentations in advance, we could give Mr. Rice some questions and some ideas. And then when he gives his presentation, he could tailor that to answer those questions and hone in on those specific data points or whatever that the board is interested in. Is that something we could do for every guest speaker?
I would strongly recommend that. And this will make it a lot easier to do that because, you know, if the board votes seven to one meeting a month, you're going to have this information farther in advance than you had in the past. So I think that's a huge benefit. You know, if you see information supporting documentation in the slide deck, you've got a question about something, letting us know that in advance helps us to prepare, you know, information so that we can show the question and then the answer at the board meeting. There may be occasions where there's a question that's just a kind of a minor issue that maybe doesn't need to be part of the presentation. But getting those in advance helps us to vet those and benefit. So I think that's a huge benefit to do it now. Yeah.
And you think everyone would be comfortable?
Sure. And just speaking personally, and I did talk with Mr. Rice after his presentation, the possibility of moving to a new format. I think everyone would appreciate that, you know, coming to the board meeting, knowing that there's a question that they can speak about and gather information in advance. I think it's super helpful. Yeah.
This is a comment. I'll reiterate it. I really am excited about some of these things and I hope that we can fill the seats in this room and I hope that we can get the community involved. And I think that this is a step towards really helping reach people in this new age of online and, you know, people's schedules are so busy. So having that advance notice, people can have the information sooner and now they can really make this a destination point. So I think as far as hitting the nail on where are people now and if they're not in this room, I'm hoping that these changes will get people in this room and plugged into their community. So thank you for this.
That turns up a good point I didn't even think about. With this new format, would it be possible to post more of the supporting documents and PowerPoints on board docs publicly so that the community can see them? Or are some of these presentations not really helpful?
By experience, given that, in a previous position, we got things out a week in advance and I think for the most part, depending on the default, is providing information publicly in advance. But there are going to be some times where it might not make sense to do that. If there's something that may be a little bit more sensitive that you don't want out in advance, you want to make sure the board is prepared to know, you know, that that conversation or that presentation is going to take place. But sometimes it's beneficial to present that at the board meeting so that as you're presenting, sometimes that in context can be really helpful. Sometimes some matters we discuss can be pretty complicated. So having a chance to walk through them as opposed to getting some information out and kind of leaving people to interpret that on their own can be a little difficult. So certainly there's going to be some information we can get out in advance. But there's still going to be some things that I think is going to be more helpful to just talk about at the board meeting itself.
Is the recommendation to go away from the onsite meetings entirely for the future? I mean, at the other six buildings?
Yeah. I think if we're going to one meeting a month, it makes sense to just stay in one place, but that's really up to the board. I'm not necessarily making a recommendation on that one way or the other. Those rotating meetings and then the tours before the meetings really kind of came from the session from the board. So we can still facilitate that if that's what the board wants to do, but I would probably encourage a little bit of session and ask for direction for us if we plan.
Eric, just my general thoughts on the central locations. Again, accessibility. I know I've had people come up to me in the public and go, "You know, I was at the high school, but there was no board meeting." It's like, "Oh, yeah, well, on this, you know, day, we meet at South Prairie and so..."
I can appreciate that. I just noticed that when we do have our onsite meetings at the elementary, whether through coercion or just excitement, there's usually a half dozen to a dozen, you know, staff from those buildings sticking around for that meeting. I hate to rob them of that opportunity or make it less convenient for them if that's something that they're looking forward to. And if they just want an excuse to not go, then holding it here is fine.
Well, and I think you hit the nail on the head with like that still being something that's connected to like an individual school's presentation or how that schools, like, it would make sense to me that if a principal was coming and presenting, keeping true to the idea of, oh, hey, support this information. I think that's nice.
Other than that, I don't have a problem with the recommendations. I guess I might prefer to keep open discussion up there for a little while and try it out that way and the other changes before completely removing that one.
I would agree with that. Keeping open discussion in future agenda.
It's usually not heavily utilized.
No.
Yes. Yeah, I agree with that too.
Even if we kept it, it's not like that takes, you know, half an hour. It's usually five minutes if used.
Yeah, I think five or 10 minutes would be the intention of converting it to a future agenda item if the board had conversations wanted. If we have the opportunity at least.
Have we run the idea of keeping something like executive session in the consent agenda instead of on its own? Have we talked to council about that?
About moving personnel, approving the personnel report to consent agenda? Haven't. If the board wants to do that, can certainly verify that. It's something that I know a lot of districts have done. I've done that in the past. That personnel gets, can be approved under consent agenda.
If we do that, could we have a memo that explains a little more than just the list of names, you know? Especially if there's a resignation or termination? Or would we just call if we had a question about why that occurred?
I would encourage board members to contact us in advance if there's a question about a specific position. A lot of the hirings, resignations, I don't want to say that they are typical, but every once in a while, there's one that kind of catches your eye. You know, why did that person leave? And if there's more context to that, that's something we would discuss in an open session.
That's what I'm saying. If we do it, how would we go about discussing that or getting that information?
You're welcome to contact, you know, me on a specific item. And if I have a question, I can share the answer with the rest of the board. One of the things that can be done, moving personnel to consent agenda is that if there's a specific action on the personnel report that wants to be discussed or ordered separately, that can be pulled before consent agenda is voted on. Does that make sense? And then even if executive session isn't on the agenda, the board could go in closed session to discuss that one item and then come on board on that one.
Yeah, as long as we indicate we've already got that item.
Yeah.
So is there a motion to adopt the new format where we go to a once a month board meeting? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Grados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Dombek?
No.
Motion carried.
All right. Excited him to do his open discussion in future agendas. Speak of the devil.
Really quickly, an email I got, there's an ISB 2030 survey, which is some goals that ISB's drafting. I assume their deadline's 2030. Have these goals implemented? And the responses are due December 22nd. So if you're interested in pulling that out, if there was an email sent, I'd be happy to forward it to anyone that didn't get it.
I'd appreciate you forwarding that. I probably did get it, but I got lost in the multitude of emails I got.
Yeah, where did the email come from? Was it Lauren Martinez?
Honestly, I don't, I think it was just a generic ISB communications address.
I don't think I got that.
Kind of the ISA sent and surveyed all the superintendents in the state and I assume that IPA did the same for principals and I had goal to do the same for school distance officials. And I know that ISA is using that feedback to kind of craft the platform for 2030, Vision 2030. So I know that that survey feedback will be very valuable. So Alex, I should bring that up. I would encourage you to respond to the survey too.
Alex, if you could send that to Kelly, maybe in the...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I'm just having her blast it out to everyone.
I also got an email regarding something called ALIS. That was an acronym for it. Did anyone else get that? Because it did come into my school board, the email for the district.
I, I, is that typical for board members to attend ALIS training? I thought that was a little strange for us to be invited to ALIS training, but we were.
Did that email come through the district?
It did not.
Okay.
No, it was through a third-party program. I would assume a program that the district uses.
So do you follow ALIS? ALIS is a crisis management approach and initiative is probably the best way to describe it. And that ALIS protocol can be taught by third-party vendors? So.
For a charge?
For a charge. And we've paid for that charge when they come in and train our staff. We want to make sure that they're trained properly. But we're not in the midst of conducting any ALIS training, so I would guess that's a requirement of...
It's a vendor marketing.
Yeah, yeah.
Your email's public, you're going to get a lot of...
They're at the Cal, so I'd assume they're just like, oh, throw in a couple more from Sycamore, pay a fee. I don't know if that's something we're required to do.
I thought it might have been spam because when you clicked on the source of the email, the information, you couldn't really locate it. So it's kind of strange.
I get ones on sub-dispensers.
Is it overmodelling?
They think that I'm in charge of that aspect of the school. They want me to know that I can buy them.
And a discount, deep discount. Any other open discussion issues, observations, questions?
Jim, I have a couple. Next Tuesday, you may be seeing this on social media, but next Tuesday, we're doing our first Heroes on the Hardwood basketball game. It's Sycamore staff, our school district staff against Sycamore Police and Fire. Just to raise donations for food pantry. So keeping it all local. The police department approached us about this, but it'll be a 6:30 tip-off at the main gymnasium at the high school. Should be funded for a good cause, so anyone's invited to come up. Hopefully, over time, we turn this into a big community event to help out our local families. So that's one. The other one I just want to draw attention to is last two days was the Illinois Raising Student Achievement Conference. And we had multiple staff members present at that. So just want to kind of draw attention to that. Mike Rice and Phoebe Valentine, they presented on scaling learner-centered practice... Mike Rice and P V Valentine, they presented on scaling learner-centered practices within the school district, so some of the work that Mike talked to you guys about, he talked to other districts about that, or they did. Lisa Winters talked about math instruction, taking math instructions to the next level. A lot of people there watching her and her expertise, that was great. And then Emily Waller presented, hers was called The Connected Classroom Community, but it was about many restorative practices and she used the book Hacking School Discipline that we've done with a lot of our staff members on restorative practices, so that was great as well. So just wanted to inform you that our staff's out there presenting to other districts and they did an amazing job, so.
Great, thank you. Is there issues, observations, questions?
Is there a time when you think we could get an update on the strategic planning process and dashboard, strategic dashboard?
I can do a quick one on both tonight. First of all, strategic survey, the strategic planning survey has closed, so we're sending all that data to our consultants, so we're going to sit through that. Got a lot of data, 460-ish responses, so really good, but it's going to take a little while to sit through that. So we've sent that to our consultants, they're going through that process now and once they've done that, then they'll come back and present the results to the board and then work through the goal setting process and then they'll work with the leadership team on in terms of the action stuff, you know, development. So right now, they're analyzing all that survey data. Continue to look at a, not necessarily strategic planning dashboard, but a, give an overview of the district dashboard. I had a virtual meeting today with a consultant with one of our representatives. So we use a software program called Forecast Five that stores a lot of our district data, financial, student data, assessment data, demographic data. It's a great place to store data. It's not, their, their expertise is not publishing or sharing that data, it's really more so for internal use. So I had a conversation with a representative today and was hoping that we could make some progress in terms of using that product that we already utilize to put together a dashboard then to share publicly. I'm not sure that that is going to work in the long run, so now we're kind of looking at other alternatives and I just had a conversation with Mrs. Holtz this afternoon. Cause my next step, my next thought was let's talk to our website provider and see if they have some recommendations in terms of the dashboard, product or a format that might work best, so that's where we're at with that.
And that would be after we get their, the goal is created, just sort of follow up. I would just do it as well.
So the dashboard that I imagine has got more student demographic data, financial data on it, so it's something that we would share with our stakeholders in terms of some information about the district. We could also develop a strategic or a separate dashboard based on the goals that come out of the strategic planning. If that's the case, I think it would make the business use the same format for those that the public is used to seeing both. No progress on that, but that's something that we can ask our consultants about, but I would also take whatever information they give us and then work with Mrs. Holtz on what we think is going to work best for our website and publishing that to our community, though we could certainly do that.
Were you able to tell how many of the respondents were high school students or students or was it mostly from people in the community?
It was mainly a community and parent response, so we had about 80 students participate in the survey, so. I thought it was pretty good. All things considered, you know, our students have a lot on the plate, so to take the time to fill out the survey, I think that was really good.
I agree.
Hesitant, ask this again. Other observations or questions or? Any future agenda items?
It sounds like that update will be, is already in the pipeline anyway, so.
Is there a motion then to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment or dismissal of personnel? Sumo.
Seconded.
Seconded, roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Grados?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Take a moment to go into. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
Sumo. Jones?
Seconded.
We've been seconded, roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Grados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sumo.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned, thank you.